Oh, yeah. All right. I'm opening the meeting at 6:30 PM on 7/16/2025. This meeting is being recorded. We have one member remote, so we will be doing roll call vote and we have two members absent. So please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. So citizens' statements and petitions, looking if anybody online or in the room would like to approach and speak to the board. All right, seeing no hands, we'll move on to number three, which is correspondence. The first one is the request for town assistance that came from Oakland.
Yeah, so another community reached out, asked the town to sign on to a letter opposing battery energy storage facility in their town. I talked with emergency management, talked with the chair as well, and we don't feel the town should weigh in on such a thing and sign our name to it. Each instance of the battery storage facility is different, and we don't want to tie their fight with anything that we're doing, and we would never ask them to sign on a letter for us. So the letters in your packet for you to review, but it's been emergency management and public safety's recommendation, and mine as well to tell them thanks, but no thanks.
Is there any discussion?
I would tend to agree.
There's nothing for us to really do here, just to acknowledge that publicly. All right, so the other correspondence was from the town clerk with the new open meeting law guide, and so there are a lot of different individual documents to go through as well as that large, there's one large coalesced document. And so tonight, there's no vote on this, but tonight the board signed off on receiving those new updates, as will every member of every committee and board that meets publicly here in the town. And so just small adjustments and reminders of how we need to run these meetings. So hopefully, we're doing a good job. So, community events and announcements, we have. I'm gonna make 6:35, watch me. We have two community events coming up. We have the 25th TAF Public Library Cardboard Boat Race, which is July 23rd at 6:30 PM. And I believe the 18th is the last day for you to sign up. You can do that, get that link on the library website. And the Mendon Lion Circus is gonna, there's gonna be a circus here on the 17th. There'll be one show, and on the 18th, there are two shows. And you can buy those tickets at the Charles River Bank right across the street. More it's gonna be held up here on the corner. You can search them on Facebook, Mendon Lions on Facebook as well, and find the information there. So, and you can see a select board member, Mr. Chanel there as well with his thing. I should have talked a little slower, because.
So, yeah, I'll be a judge at the cardboard boat race, so I hope to see some folks there. I think the select board.
The select board needs to get its act together and build a vote. We're gonna at least try on Saturday to get something started. So, Elena, yeah?
So I just, a little point of order, I think, just having recently reviewed the open meeting laws, I believe that Jason, the chair, is supposed to say the names of any board members who are attending remotely, not just the number.
Okay, I'm gonna assume I didn't say that, because you're telling me that.
Why?
But we can't rewind, so yes, Elena Brugos is attending remotely. So, and Chair Member Maroli and Goddard are absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it's 6:35, and we have a public hearing to open. And so I will do that now. The Mendon Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 16, 2025, at 6:35 PM in the upper town hall located at 20 Main Street, Mendon, Massachusetts, to consider the transfer of a package store license for the sale of wines and malt beverages under NGL Chapter 138, Section 12. The license is currently held by, you can come up. 147 Hartford Admin, Hartford Admin LLC, doing business as Savon, being transferred to MKG Mendon Incorporated, doing business as Savon. And all interested parties are invited to attend and will be given an opportunity to be heard, and I am making a motion to open this public hearing. Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Brugos, aye.
All right, motion passes. So, welcome.
Thank you.
We were, we are with Savon, with MKG, and in case you had any questions, we just wanted to be here.
Well, my first question, it's Savon, not Savon.
It's, they call it Savon.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we're not properly. So I guess the big open question is, why are we transferring this license? Really quickly, after you guys have opened.
Yeah, so just, I'll start with my spiel, and if you have any follow-up questions.
Yes.
Yes, I'm Sydney Procos, I'm an attorney with Vera and DJ and Filippo. Here's my client, Marcel Georges, who is the new owner and proposed new manager for this liquor store.
Okay.
So we represent MKG Mendon Inc., and we are seeking your approval to transfer the beer and wine license from 147 to our client, and acknowledging you may be familiar with this license, it was recently approved to 147, and now it's getting transferred to our client, who is the new owner. So with that new ownership, that license needs to be transferred as well, and it's a requirement by ABCC that we go before the town, just like we did the first time. And now to have it be approved to our client, Mr. Marcel Georges, but this is an internal change, and I want to highlight that everything that you just approved, none of that changes. The location, the hours of operation, then even the name, like, nothing changes. This is just a requirement by ABCC to go before you guys and approve the transfer of the license itself.
Okay, so internally, management ownership's changing, and therefore, we need to update everything nice and officially, but everything else we previously talked about in front of the public here has been the same.
No external changes, yeah.
Just the, just this one particular location.
Correct, yes. Um, just this one location is changing.
Right, so if there's no more comments from the select board, I would open up comments from the public. And seeing none, I would just ask the board one more time if they had any more questions or if I was clear, it's pretty semantic. Okay, so then I would make a motion to close this 6:35 public hearing. I, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Chanel, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Right, motion passes. So now we would need to then make another motion, so I'd be looking for a motion to do the approval.
I move to approve the transfer of the package store license for the sale of wines and malt beverages to MKG Mendon Incorporated, does business as Savon.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? It's a lot simpler when two of us are missing. Seeing as there's no discussion, all those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Brugos, aye.
All right, so thanks, you're all set. Congratulations on your purchase, and we look forward to successful business.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. You too. All right, so we have five minutes before the next public hearing, so we're gonna jump forward and we'll talk about number seven, which is the Mendon Cultural Council. They are requesting permission to host the second annual scarecrow contest across town, and I know this went super well last year, everybody was super excited to see all those awesome scarecrows around town, so why don't you tell us more about it? And start with your name.
I'm Joanne Lamoth, I'm a member and committee chairperson for the Mendon Cultural Council. Once again, the Mendon Cultural Council would like to do another scarecrow contest. The contest registration would be September 1st to the 27th. They can email the Mendon Cultural Council to register. I'll be also putting flyers out through town and advertising it through the town website and Facebook, social media. Scarecrows have to be out by October 1st, and October 1st to the, to the, they can display them October 1st to the 31st, however, judging will be from October 1st, with the winner announced on the 27th, which we will do a reception and invite all participants to come.
It's a great ad.
And, you know, see, we'll put pictures out of all the scarecrows and all of that stuff, but at least to be able to see, and we can thank them, and they can get to see other, the other participants in this contest as well. And once again, we'll do trophies and award medallions for people, participation medallions. The same rules as last year, they can't block the line of sight of traffic, they can't be in the middle of the road, you know, the same exact rules. The only changes that we're making this year is when you register, we will give you a QR code, so people will come and they'll take a picture of that QR code, and that will be their vote when they take that picture. So it'll go to a website, and it will tally the votes, and that will be their vote, and that way there we will know. And as I did last year, I will update Facebook all the time to let people know where they stand. And I hope, again, the town hall select board participates in this contest, because it was a fun thing last year.
There was a lot of really great department participations last year, so yeah, hopefully we'll see that again.
I'm here just to get your approval on that, so that we can move forward with this, because we'd like to continue to make it an annual event if we, to keep it going.
All right, so we have these two points on here, we have to do two separate motions for a reschedule and one for the annual, that's.
Yeah.
So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the cultural council to hold the second annual scarecrow contest from October 1st.
Second.
And do you want to chat, because I see that you have your hand up?
So I did have a question. Joanne mentioned the reception for, like, at the end, and I wondered if you could say a little bit more about that, will that be on town property as well?
What we were thinking is we'd have it up here in the town hall. We'd have it in the evening of the town hall, on the 27th, when we announce the results, it'd be at the reception here at the town hall, and we, you know, serve some beverages and cookies and stuff like that, but at least that way there everyone would be together.
With the town clerk, so we can reserve.
Sure will, yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Brugos, aye.
All right, so with reception to be held here in town hall, and then we need to reschedule the scavenger hunt, because, oh, right, two separate events. Because it was, it was rained out, and we didn't have a rain date, so you'd like to move it to September 21st, isn't it?
Yes, it's a Sunday morning, we do it from 9:00 to 12:00, it's the same route, nothing's changed, it'll start at Clef and end at Clef, it'll be of the old village of Mendon. Same questions, you know, you get to one, and QR codes are there to direct them to additional website, which would give them more information, and it's just the exact same, the only thing is, we just couldn't do it, because of the rain.
Right.
Do we, do we want to add a review to this?
We're gonna do this rain or shine. This is the vote we've done, rain or shine, it is happening on the 21st. If it's raining, stick your mud boots on, get a rain gear on, we're doing it.
All right, well, then I'd be looking for a motion to approve this rain or shine.
I move to approve the cultural council historic scavenger hunt on Sunday, September 21st, 2025, from 9:00 to 12:00 PM, starting, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, starting at Henry Clough School.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to add, there was a rain date for, you may recall, like, every Saturday for like, three years was raining.
That was one of the scratches, yeah, all right. I didn't forget, because I was soggy brained.
But yes, I believe, yeah, there was a rain date, it's just the rain date got rained out as well.
Yeah, so we're gonna try the fall.
All right, so all those in favor.
Good strategy to go with rain.
Rain or shine event. Cooter, aye?
Brugos, aye.
All right, sorry to rush you, we have to start a meeting.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, all the, the cultural council does these events, they're really awesome, thank you. Okay, so quickly, we're gonna go back to number six, which is the public hearing about PJ's at Miss Mendon Diner. So.
Just continue it, it says continue to a later date.
I don't even have to read the whole thing? Okay, well, then we're gonna continue it to a later date, and that's that.
Yeah, we'll publish the time when we have it, they were, did not have everything necessary to have hold this hearing, so we'll continue to a later date and notify the public as such.
All right, I love rushing to. So. Take a breather. And talk about donations. So Brothers of the Brush, see some gentlemen in the audience, you guys want to come up and talk about the park benches?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
And chair, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very much. This is a select board member, remote select board member, greetings. Well, first stop by introducing myself for the general audience, my name is Tom Pickner. I'm a member of the Brothers of the Brush, I've been for roughly 20, 21 years. I currently serve on the executive board as treasurer of the organization. I want to introduce my wingman here this evening, we have Mr. Tom Bellin, who's been a member of the Brothers of the Brush for, excuse me, a period of time, three years, it's okay. He also serves on our scholarship committee as well. And we also have Mr. AJ Byrne, who is a member of the executive board. AJ also is our membership coordinator as well, and also handles a lot of other things that you may not formally have a title for, but does many things, a lot of, he may things. So we're here tonight to present a donation to the town of Mendon, on behalf of the Brothers of the Brush. And I have a letter, unfortunately, our president was unable to be here tonight, he's away. So if I may, I'd like to read a letter here and.
Yeah, we'd like to hear.
Read that in, okay, great. So this is to the Mendon Select Board, Town Administrator, regarding donation for new tables and benches at Memorial Park. Greetings to the Select Board and Town Administrator, the Menham Brush Association, AKA Brothers of the Brush, would like to present to you the enclosed donation in the sum of $4,906.64 for the purchase of new tables and benches to be installed at Memorial Park. The need for these tables and benches was brought to the attention of our association by a resident of Mendon, and our membership voted unanimously to support this worthy cause. Additionally, the Brothers of the Brush are prepared to offer our services toward the labor aspect of installing these tables and benches. Just don't make us sweat too much. Since its founding in 1967, the Menham Brush Association has operated under two key principles, to support individuals, families, and organizations in Mendon and surrounding towns, and to improve and promote public spirit and cooperation in our community. Our 40-plus strong membership consists of individuals dedicated to these principles. We continually strive to improve and enhance our support for the people in our community. Warmest regards, Chad LaVastie, Menham Brush Association, President.
That's quite generous of your organization. Can you tell us a little bit more about the park benches? You're not talking about the stuff underneath the gazebo, you're talking about physically installed benches along the paths, is that?
Yeah, so as I understand it, it's not the benches under the, in the pavilion area, there's apparently a couple of benches that are out in the field, and that are, I guess, in tough condition. And so these are the tables that we're talking about replacing. Specifically, as I understand it, it's two tables that are handicapped accessible, and I neglected to bring a photograph that I was gonna show you folks exactly what it is, where there's a bench on one side, it's open on the other.
Right, the table kind of extends out, so a wheelchair could come underneath.
Correct, yeah. And then there's also five benches, I believe, along with that, just benches, that would be positioned in various points in the park. Where exactly, I'm not sure, but if you gentlemen.
Yeah, I can kind of take off my brother's hat, and as a parks commissioner, so Dan and I reviewed the benches yesterday, so they will be identical to the ones at the beach, so the metal type benches for longevity. And they'll be, if you bend up there by the playground area, those benches have pretty much fallen apart, so they'll be up in there, and we're trying to remove the picnic tables that are, again, falling apart, because they're all wood, up in the park area. To some extent, we were hoping for the parks side of it, that the benches, those would be available for the block party as well, so we're not sure. It's gonna be tight, we probably won't have it, but fortunately, the park is used a lot, you know, as you may probably know.
That's, I've sat on those benches outside the playground many times.
Yeah, and I think what happened was the brothers, as you probably know, I mean, I'm loving a member, but very generous with, and so we had a golf tournament that was very successful for our first one. So, and that was part of the discussion at the meeting, just kind of see how we did, and we did well enough to be able to provide the benches, and, you know, it's just, it came up, brothers just said, you know, let's, let's do this, and.
Are you planning on, like, organizing any of the benches, or they're just gonna be benches, or?
Yes, either way, if the brothers don't do it, we talked about former brothers possibly. I know Elegant Barrows is already memorialized at a, one of the bleachers. If not, Dan and I talked about looking at maybe doing, we kind of lean towards veterans a lot, but it could be, you know, we can talk more about it, but either way, yes, we'd like to.
And I'm glad AJ brought it up, I spoke with Dan Byer, the Parks Recreation Director, this is, this is something that parks wants and needs and will use and is appropriate for a space, so it's not, you know, a donor directing what we should do, this is something that the, that the town needs, and they're fulfilling a, fulfilling a need for a space.
Correct, yeah.
So administratively, we have to make two motions, one to accept the gift, and then one to create an account for it to be placed in, and we're not going to be creating separate accounts, or?
Correct, I, I spoke with accounting, and I said, can we create just a, Parks Gift Fund, so we don't have to do this every time that something comes in? And they said, no, they want, because this is a specific donation, they want an account specific to that donation, so that's more work on their end, but they're the ones doing it, and they're the ones suggesting it, so it's, it's two motion, data specific.
All right, so I'd be looking for that first motion to accept them, thanks.
I move to accept the funds from the Brothers of the Brush for the installation of park benches.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, thank you for your generosity. All right, all those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Brugos, aye.
Excellent, and then the second motion, I'd be looking for to create a gift account to hold and expend the funds that were just accepted from the Brothers of the Brush.
I move to create a gift account to hold and expend the funds for the benches.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Chanel, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Right, motion passes. Gentlemen, thank you very much, we really appreciate it. As always, your organization does a lot for a town, thank you so much. This is gonna go to this guy right here. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Would you guys want to do a picture?
Oh, yeah, we should do a picture for the brothers, yeah. Come on up.
Hold on, put on the fancy shirt.
I'll just write a picture. Who would you like to? I'll just stand up in a row here. Guys in the middle, video camera in the middle.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
You do, one, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you. All right, thanks. One, five, three by tens, and six, seven by five.
Large sizes?
Yeah, we're only doing ornaments this year, sorry.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, and so I'm just gonna pause for a minute to ask Elena how the sound has been this meeting, because we're remote, and we want to make sure you can hear us.
Thank you, it's been great so far, so much, much clearer from the beginning, so thank you for checking, although I would have spoken up again.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so another donation. So we have an anonymous donor that has donated a gently-used Blackstone Grill to the fire department, so that they can get their cooking on outside the department there during on-call. Chief, you're here, do you want to say anything?
I, this came through the, the town administrator's office, and it was just a donation that they're looking, they're probably gonna use it for different events we do in the open house, public safety type things, so.
Awesome.
And I, once again, checked with the department, it's not like a milk and milk for them, right? This is something that they want and use, so, yeah, the resident had used it once, said the fire department can get better use out of it, and wants to stay anonymous.
That's fantastic. So I, I'd just be looking for a motion to accept the anonymous donation.
I move to accept the donation of a gently-used Blackstone Grill.
Second.
Any discussion? As always, our generous residents stepping up to help out, so that's pretty awesome. All right, all those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Chanel, aye.
Brugos, aye.
All right, thank you very much, anonymous Blackstone Grill donor. All right, so number nine, special town meeting considerations.
Yeah, so we had talked about the floodplain bylaw not being in its particular, the specifications weren't, didn't comport with FEMA requirements. There's one person in town who is under this program, town planner has, without success yet, tried to reach out to this person to see when their renewal date, right, because if their renewal date's in February, it doesn't matter whether we pass it into, so we're trying to get some more information on this individual before we consider a special town meeting specifically for revised floodplain bylaw. So working on it, it'll probably be next meeting, we're trying to reach out to the one.
Okay. Thanks for your place.
All right, and the zoning bylaw review, so you received a, a list of proposed zoning bylaw review changes earlier today. I'm reading through the notes there. So we should wait until the next meeting before we talk about all this, or we should talk about it?
Yeah, this is certainly just an FYI, the point was just to say, here's what the zoning bylaw review committee is on certain things, so I'm sharing it on the screen now. A lot of it is grammar changes, some, some clarifying and textual changes, the, removing what we think is a unenforceable and unallowable restriction on marijuana signage. ADU bylaw, we passed it at the 2024 Fall Town Meeting, but we got, like I said, a 17-page response from the Attorney General's Office, so the town planner is working with town council now to rectify that, that's a large one. And then the number 10 and number 11, new proposed zoning bylaw to allow by special permit a limited number of common driveways with specific conditions, and new proposed zoning bylaw for flag lots, which are lots with reduced road frontage and larger area behind it, looks like flagpole with a flag on it, subject to special permit and specific conditions. So those are two of the, two of the new ones that are on here. Again, this has been circulated to, to the select board, and before the Fall Town Meeting warrant is closed, and these are placed on them, we'll have greater discussions with the board. And then there's also kind of an FYI of stuff that they're also working on, stuff about photovoltaic facilities, moving definitions, other small changes, and then organizational changes to the document. There wasn't a meeting yesterday. Um, there wasn't a meeting yesterday, so I was planning on having the planner here today to talk about what happened yesterday, but they didn't have the form. Um, so we'll have this, we'll have a update from the zoning bylaw review committee in um, uh, in advance of Fall Town Meeting.
Alright. Thank you for that update. Alright, so building inspection fees. Um, so uh, you also would have received a memo from the town administrator. Uh, as well as a table of proposed fees that listed off uh, both new existing fees, new fees and. Fee schedules from towns in our area so that you could do a comparison there. Um, and so I see that the building commissioner is online. Um, John, do you want to talk about these proposed fees and why we think it's a good idea to make these changes for our town?
Um, yes, I would, thank you. Um, you know, as the memo says, I've, I've had a chance to review the fees uh, recently. Um, the last time the building department fee, building permit fees were updated was 2013. Uh, plumbing and gas, plumbing, gas and electrical fees were last updated in 2014. Um, you know, with the building department being a fee-based department, um, of course, the fees are meant to cover inspector salaries, direct costs. Our direct expenses, indirect expenses, et cetera. Um, the, the, the adjustments here are pretty basic on the building permit fees. Um, the major one is just moving the fee for an commercial occupancy permit. Into the building permit fee so that it's paid upfront instead of at the end of a project. It just makes it better for all involved. Um, along with that, it's what I would consider a nominal increase of roughly a dollar per thousand of the cost of construction across the board. Um, plumbing, gas and wiring fees, the, the structure didn't make a whole lot of sense. Um, we had a lot of, or not a lot, but we had certain types of projects that um, didn't even fall into a category such as, you know, on electrical uh, solar. Which is probably our largest um, number of permits in building and wiring. So um. Without getting into too much nitty gritty, I, I've given you the current fee schedule, the proposed uh, increases. And a list of towns to compare it to, and I'm here for any, you know, trying to answer any questions.
Yeah, I mean, so from my point of view, this all looked pretty valid. Nothing really jumped out at me is extraordinary or. And, and I really appreciate the, the comparison with the other towns that was bottom line, very helpful. Um, so I, I'd open it up to the board, like, is, is there anything different you'd like to see in this fee schedule? Is it confusing? Do you understand where John's going with all this?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it's, it's uh, relatively clear and the comparison uh, ma- makes it clear that we, we have to be in line with surrounding towns. And um, guess I'll stay there a little bit.
And I want to just reiterate a point that the building commissioner made, that um, you know, the, the permit fees are a large local receipt for us. Um, but also our building inspectors are paid not directly from these fees, but paid out of the general fund which is then supported by these fees. Um, and having not changed them in over a decade, the purchasing power for us of those fees has been drastically reduced.
Yeah, get, getting in line um, without extraordinary measures. I mean, you know, most of these are not going up a, a terrible amount. Or if they are going up, they're going up, you know, because they're so archaically old. Um, so it, it all seems very reasonable. This has got a big um, impact as a whole, right? But on the individual should be pretty minor. Uh, Elena?
Yeah, so I just uh, also glad to see this being addressed. Um, and I don't know if I missed it. But what is a more appropriate schedule for us to revisit these fees? Cause clearly eleven years is too long. Um, did you say, like, did you have advice about how often uh, typically these would be addressed?
Um, I, I haven't really thought about that. I would say it should be looked at every two to three years. Uh, in, in some sense, you know, there is a, an inherent increase because when the cost of construction. Which some permit fees are based off of increases, the, you know, the, the related permit fee does increase. Um, some of them, we had something so archaic that, uh, you know, a plumbing or, no, I'm sorry, a gas inspection that required two permits. Where we pay our inspector forty dollars per inspection was a forty dollar permit. So that clearly didn't make sense, so. Um, I, I would, I mean, I think I should keep an eye on it on an ongoing basis, but you know, every two to three years to just revisit and. You know, make minor adjustments. I don't think there would be any major adjustments needed.
Right, yeah, I think, yeah, that does seem like a, a better strategy to have it be percentage versus a flat fee.
Yeah, with this drastic changes in supply costs and whatnot over the last few years especially.
And I was just gonna add, it's a, it's a typical structure that most towns use. Some, some types of work is a flat fee and other is, you know, a percentage. Of, of the job cost and it's, I think we're, you know, all towns are using both methods. Um, but I, I think, I think this really tightens it up to what we really should be doing. You know, considering, we don't want to do necessarily what every other town is doing, but we, we want to take some of that into consideration. But I think, I think this is a um, a, a very solid fee schedule.
And John, this um, simplifies the electrical permits too, is that correct?
Um, yes, drastically to the extent that we can now put that into our software system. So when somebody applies for a permit, it will generate the fee, whereas in the, for the past forever since our online permitting came in. Or even before that, when it was paper-based, um, we had to somehow try and correlate the, the. Um, ambiguous fee schedule with the scope of work, which um, now we can just, you know, uh, we can set it up in the viewpoint software. And when somebody um, applies for a certain, whether it's a solar permit or anything else or a swimming pool, the fee will be generated and it's gonna save time. So um, we don't have to wait for the, the reaction of, of permits applied for. Then the wiring inspector logs in and reviews it, sets the fee, and then it goes back to the contractor. So it's, it's definitely gonna expedite things and make things more convenient.
Certainly, and it, it allows folks to know the cost of, before it, it took that extra level of staff work and it wasn't clear to the applicant. Um, so the simplification of the fees, let me explain this.
Like Operation Lexan, that's a slow and see, I'm also bringing that work. Um, that's great. Um, okay. So. I think there are no more questions and there's really no opposition to the proposed fees by the admin or the board. I'd be looking um, to get a motion to approve.
I want to make sure this is covered. This was in the proposal as well, that permit fees um, are waived by select boards for all, by the select board for all municipal owned properties. Um, so that happened on a case-by-case basis. So this proposal is saying the default is for the. Um, so in those cases, we would waive the permit fee, uh, we would still end up paying our inspectors, but it, you know, we, it's one pocket versus the other, yeah.
Right, we're still, we're still submitting the permits.
So there are the permits and we're paying the inspectors, uh, but we're not.
Take your money out of one pocket, put it in.
Right, because when we have a contractor doing, if we require them to pull the permit. In half the case, they mark that up and then we end up paying more for a thing where we can just waive it altogether.
Right, makes sense.
So this is in our uh, procurement documents right now saying fees have been waived for blah, 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 blah. Uh, but it takes individual votes, uh, this would make it the default.
So, sir.
Alright, uh, I move to um, accept the fee schedule as presented by the building commissioner.
Second.
Any discussion? John, appreciate all the effort that you put into this. Thank you. Um.
If I can just ask for clarification, that would be in effect immediately because we were hoping to do this in June for July first. To go into effect on July first, but being July sixteenth or fifteenth, whatever it is day, with Deputy Hanks.
Yeah.
Do we have to change our motion? Alright, so then I'm gonna ask you to amend the motion.
Yeah, amend the motion, so I, I move to um, approve the schedule of fees as presented by the building commissioner, uh, effective date immediately.
Second.
Thank you. Alright, any discussion? Right, uh, seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Brucos, aye.
Alright, so the motion passes, John, those fees go into effect immediately, and so you can go ahead and make your updates. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Alright. Um.
Is the fire?
Yeah. What number is that? Okay, number sixteen? On-call firefighter rates?
Yes.
Sorry, sir, you got, got buried in a very long agenda. So uh, we're gonna talk, uh, we're gonna skip forward because Chief is here and we don't want to keep them waiting to number sixteen to talk about on-call firefighter rates.
Please, anyone, Fire Chief?
Welcome.
After the last meeting, there was some questions regarding the on-call rates. Did well digging and found that they haven't been receiving the COLA increases that everyone else in town is getting. So Jeremy and I got together and figured out where they should be at. Um, and then streamlined the promotional part of it. They were, they're kind of all over the place with the percentage increases for each rank. So there's the current proposal. And I'm just gonna say that this will get us to the bottom of the pay scale still for the area towns for the on-call. So this will just be a, for now, I'd still be looking for the bigger market adjustment in the future to get them where they should be.
Future are you looking for? What's your timeframe?
Uh, I believe when the next fiscal year, the compensation study to match what everyone else receives.
Just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. Um, yeah, so, so uh, select board member Goddard was pretty uh, adamant about ensuring we knew what we were talking about. Um, and uh, the, the town admin had made mention that that report is wrapping up, so we should have that.
A meeting on the twenty-third.
Imminently, uh, which means I hope to be talking about this in the, in September. So um, okay, great. So we'd be looking to then do these catch-up rates, um, as noted here. And you're, you're gonna keep the recruit rate at fifteen?
Yes, the recruits are non-trained firefighters. They're just, they're learning the job. Once they become certified firefighters, they will get the bump to the.
Alright, so they're gonna get that three dollar and eighty-one cent bump once they complete their training.
Their certification, yeah.
And this keeps the stipend, so we talked about um, during the chief's proposal, uh, the last meeting. Um, to eliminate the stipends and bring the hourly rates up to much greater than this. Um, so this, because this is your COLA, so this, this applies the twenty, as it says in the memo, the last one they received was July twenty-one. Um, so this applies the COLAs that other town employees have received and then creates this ten percent. It applies that to firefighter, then creates these ten percent spread between the ranks. Um, and then uh, it keeps their stipend. So as we talk about the twenty-seven budget, this is all kind of up for, up for debate at that point. Remove all the stipends and the market adjustment, but I want to be very clear that that stipend stays.
Alright, and is this uh, clear enough for your on-call firefighters? Like, do they understand what's going on here?
Yes, yeah, they understand that it's.
I don't want to ask if they're okay because I'm sure they wouldn't be okay. They just don't want to say that, so that's fine, I get it. Um, but they understand.
Yep.
Okay.
None of them are there for the money.
I, I don't think anybody does these civil jobs.
It just getting the rate in a better place will help keep the people we do have, right, keep them.
And I want to reiterate, you said this just gets us to the bottom of the pay scale. We really need to go up higher to eat talent. Um, and I just want to point out that the talent that we're talking about here isn't just firefighters, but you have to bring in lieutenants, captains and deputy chiefs. Uh, time to cover these spots, we just don't have enough staff, right? So this isn't just, just the operations, this is the whole, right, leadership and us.
We currently do not have any on-call lieutenants. The three lieutenants we have are on career.
Okay.
So that's just their future.
Just the cat there for the future and happens.
Yep. And you were on-call deputy chief before?
I was on-call deputy chief for three years, two or three years before I became chief.
So we usually get some pretty good talent from that pool.
We try.
Um, does the board have any discussion on this?
No, I think we also covered it last time, just to make sure that going forward, this doesn't slip again.
Two points on that, definitely won't. He's, the way of it now, yeah. And second, I, I'm never in a position to speak for another select board member. But select board Morale called me and expressed his uh, desire uh, that we get these rates up and do it quickly. So he's not here to vote tonight, but he was, uh, I can't say about his specifics on these specific rates, but his um, desire was to, to have this done and done quickly.
He spoke to me as soon.
I mean, it's only fair.
And these would be retroactive, uh, to preempt the question that John asked the board, these would be retroactive to July first, to one, one pay period.
And they get paid monthly, so. We wouldn't even have to really do much.
Alright, well, um, I think it's an easy enough thing to uh, understand. So um, I don't have any additional questions. I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Uh, I move to approve the on-call firefighter rates as presented by the chief and the town administrator.
Second.
Right, uh, any discussion? So seeing as there's no discussion, all those in favor? Uh, Cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Alright, so the motion's approved. Thank you so much, Chief. Sorry, we didn't get to you a little earlier. Have a great night. Alright, I'm gonna run through, um, I'm gonna jump back to twelve. And we're gonna run through some reappointments here. And so there's a lot. And they're all gonna be different, so we're gonna have to go through each one. So the first one is um. I'm gonna do this. Uh, I'm gonna state the first one and then Brendan's gonna read the motion. Then Elena's gonna second and then we'll go through it, I guess, like that.
Yeah.
Alright, so um, we're looking to reappoint Peter Denton to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
I move to reappoint Peter Denton to the Agricultural Commission for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Three-year term.
Three-year term.
It says two, but it's three.
Ah, should think about it.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Great, um, so uh, that passes. The second one would be to appoint Lisa Vanderfalk and Christina Wont, is that Wont or Wantey? Wont to the Agricultural Commission.
I move to appoint Lisa Vanderfalk to the Agricultural Commission for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight, pending uh, the complete community ethics.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brucos, aye.
I move to appoint uh, Christina Wantey uh, to the Agricultural Commission for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, pending.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Excellent. Thank you, Christina and Lisa.
I just, I just want to be clear on these motions. These are uh, the select board had posted these vacancies um, for, for all these um, commissions for expiring terms. Um, so we're going, some of these are reappointments for folks who are interested, uh, but the Agriculture Commission, those are two new ones. And that was the select board goal to reinvigorate the agricultural commissions. Now we have a, we have a quorum there and uh, we'll be reaching out to those folks shortly to uh, to get that committee back, back up and running.
Yeah, that's great.
That's gonna be weird.
I didn't smile in ear to ear. Alright, um. Uh, so uh, we need to rea- uh, reappoint uh, James Thatch Capital Planning. Uh, Chief, second, to the Capital Planning Committee, that, that was a very shy, I read it directly.
Easy to do. Alright, I, I move to reappoint James Thatch to the Capital Planning Committee for it to be a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brucos, aye.
Thank you, James. Uh, and so now we need to reappoint Michael Goddard to the Community Preservation Commission as the select board uh, representative.
Alright, uh, I move to uh, reappoint uh, Mike Goddard to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term to.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Cooter, aye?
Brucos, aye.
Alright, uh, we need to reappoint Diane Howell and Donna Sun. to that council on aging.
Because we do the same term for the same.
Combine that into one.
That sounds good. I moved to reappoint Diane Howell and Donna Sun to the Council on Aging for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Alright, thank you very much, Diane and Donna. And now we need to reappoint Tom Maroli to the Economic Development Committee.
I moved to reappoint Tom Maroli to the Economic Development Committee for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tom Maroli. Alright, now we need to reappoint Jim Stover to the Cultural Council.
I moved to reappoint Jim Stover to the Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion?
This has an MGL, which limits the term someone can serve on the Cultural Council, and Elena and I have talked about this before. I don't know why the Cultural Council is the one subject to term limits, but it is. And but Jim Stover has not reached that, so he will after this, and we'll have to take a year hiatus, but we confirmed that before.
Very interesting municipal fact. Thank you.
That is extremely interesting.
I would love to know the history of that.
But the town's already tracked this and is cognizant of it, and it's good to go.
Um, alright, shoot, where are we at?
Yeah, that was discussion.
Discussion, thank you. Alright, all those in favor, cooter, aye?
Brugos, aye.
Thank you very much, Jim. Alright, we need to reappoint Christina Campbell to the Historical Commission and to and to the Historical District Commission.
I moved to reappoint Christina Campbell to the Historic Commission and the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Thank you very much, Christina. Alright, we are reappointing Debbie Bro to the Historical Commission.
I need to, I moved to reappoint Deborah Bro to the Historical Commission for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Alright, thank you very much, Deborah. We need to reappoint Elena Brugos and Anne Mazars to the Land Use Committee.
Uh, okay.
That would be fun.
Is there any issue with appointing yourself?
Yeah, is this gonna be an issue?
Do we have to pass that to the next one, so we can have a prayer?
You have a quorum here, and you need a majority of the quorum, so two votes is a legitimate vote.
Okay, sounds good.
So so Jason can second.
So I will second, and and I think we will, yeah, you'll abstain. That'll be good fun. Okay.
Can we do and separately, or?
Yeah, let's do and separately. Yeah, that sounds good.
I I moved to reappoint Elena Brugos to the Land Use Committee for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Uh, second. Discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
I'll abstain.
Alright, motion passes. Next.
I moved to reappoint Anne Mazars to Land Use Committee for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Thank you very much, Elena and Anne. Um, alright, we need to reappoint Matthew Clark to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I moved to reappoint Matt Clark to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Alright, the next one and the last one is to reappoint Lonnie Tinio as the alternate zoning board of appeals for a one-year term.
I moved to reappoint Lonnie Tinio as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a one-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Discussion? Is this, are the whole minutes always one year? Um, okay, all those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Alright, thank you very much, Lonnie.
And so on the point of appointments, there are two that are not on here, two committees. So there's the Conservation Commission and the Finance Committee, both of which have multiple folks interested in openings. So with the Conservation Commission, there were two openings with two incumbents. One incumbent was interested in being reappointed, the other incumbent was not. And we have, Katie, I think there's three other, two or three, there's multiple other people interested. So we've got, we've got three to four people, the chairs on and can can elaborate a little bit. Multiple people for for the vacancy. So and with Finance Committee, we have two incumbents who are interested in reappointment and one new candidate interested in reappointment. So what the chairs of both committees are looking for is guidance from the select board on how they should be approaching this. So ultimately, the appointment is the select board's appointment. Historically, when there has been an opening, committees have interviewed interested parties and come to the select board with their recommendation. It becomes a little more difficult. I shouldn't say that. There is less precedent in recent times when we have incumbents kind of interviewing and standing for reappointment to their own position against folks who were not currently on the committee. So both chairs are looking for guidance on, you know, should we interview everybody, the the folks who are up for reappointment and interested in discussion and votes? Do you want the board to to meet and provide recommendations, that the constituent committees to meet, provide recommendations to the board? Does the board want to interview people individually? They're just looking for some guidance on how you think they should, they should proceed.
This is one that we probably need the whole board to discuss, but we will get started. Carl, why don't you, you got your hand up, why don't you chat about what's going on?
Right, well, my question is, what is the current policy? The two thousand eighteen policy very clearly states what should be done in this circumstance, but I've been informed, but not seen the draft proposal that's being reviewed by town council. Does that draft change the process for interviewing?
So as I understand it, the policy is relative to openings on the committee. So what I had said that there wasn't recent precedent on this, it was my understanding that we haven't had both incumbents and, you know, newcomers, outside folks, whoever, new new faces at the same time. So I think there will be an interview process, but I I think having specific guidance from the select board is useful.
Okay, what I have done with the candidates for the Conservation Commission is that I've extended them an invitation to attend our next meeting. We will be interviewing the three new members, as well as Peter Coffin, the incumbent. Peter Coffin would not be participating in the deliberations. After we interview all four candidates, I would ask the Conservation Commission to entertain a motion as to whether they wish to make a recommendation or whether they wish to just leave that up for the select board.
That's a great way to approach it.
Yeah, I think that's pretty reasonable. I'm just, our policy, the one that's under review right now, is is pretty high level, and it and it and it says essentially that it's desired but not mandatory for.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, um. Yeah, I I think it's fair for every person looking for the spot to talk about why they want that, even if they're incumbent.
Yeah.
Um, right, and I think I think I would prefer that the committee make a choice, but I understand that there are times it can't, so.
What we what we did the last time we had a contested position, we had two candidates, and both of them had strengths and weaknesses. Both of them had different, very strong backgrounds, and the letter I prepared for the select board laid out what those were. And I left it up to the select board to say, okay, what kind of experience do you want on the the commission?
I remember that letter, Carl. That was extremely helpful, and and I think that's a very good, helpful way to go.
Yeah, I think if the board has context to make the decision, and that context is backed by the expertise of that board, then we should be able to do that, right? Like, but it's when the it's when the recommendation doesn't come with any context, or there's no context, and it's, you know, you make the choice. When we're not the experts in that space, it makes that pretty difficult. So that's why I'd like the committee to provide that context. It sounds like you're going to, so.
Yes. What's happened in the past is after the commission or the committee appoint, does the interviews, the select board can then have another round of interviews and and talk to people. If, and and as I could also appear as the Concom Chair, saying here is what the Concom recommendation is.
Alright, that's fair, and so we'd be, we'd be looking to have that discussion. The first, if you're gonna meet at the next meeting to the first meeting in August, right? Elena?
So I just wanted to add, I know one, one question that comes up often when potential candidates come to select board meetings for interviews is we ask whether candidates might be interested in other boards or committees. And I know with so many people interested in serving the town, I would love to, like, take the opportunity to see if any of them might, clearly, we can't appoint all of them to the this one open spot, but like, consider whether there might be other openings where these people might be able to contribute to the town. So just little planting that seed there.
Yeah, it sounds like, Katie, if you could print like a one pager to hand out.
Do that.
There are plenty of open spots.
So that will come to the next meeting, like all the people who are.
We'll have to wait for Carl to get back to us.
Well, even even after we interview all four candidates, I would say that the select board should do the same, but they would be guided by what our recommendation would be.
Yeah.
It's it's your appointment, not ours.
Yes, thank you.
Um, is that enough guidance, Carl, or do you want more?
No, no, that's that's fine for the Conservation Commission. I will now put on my other hat as someone interested in the FinCom and say, yep, let me know what the FinCom's doing.
Or any member.
Yeah, so, yes, the town administrator is memoing our statements right now. So I I think that's fair, and I think it's clear, and it there's precedent for it, so. Alright, um. So there's nothing we need to specifically do here. We've spoken about what our guidance is. We just need to follow through on what we've said. And wish Carl good luck in both his hats. So thanks, Carl, for hanging out to, you know, an hour and so into the meeting to to ask those questions and get us to clarify publicly. That's that's good.
The advantage of attending remotely is you can multitask.
Alright, well, does anybody have anything else to add? Otherwise, we can move on to the next agenda. Alright, so agenda item number thirteen is meeting minutes from approval. You'll remember that one of them was held back for amending, and that amendment has been made and approved by select board member Goddard. So we're ready to move and approve them.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and June eighteenth.
Second.
Discussion? Are we caught up?
Yep.
Sweet. That's really awesome. I think that's like the first time since I've been here.
Yeah, I want to say. You had a senior tax abatement worker, but got all of twenty twenty-four done and then caught up on twenty twenty-five while learning the rest of the job. So, yeah, I'm pretty proud of that as well.
Alright, that's really exciting news. Alright, alright, all those in favor, cooter, aye?
Shana, aye.
Brugos, aye.
Alright, motion passes. Thank you. And then item number fourteen in your packet were minutes for circulation from the last meeting. So make sure that you look at those and make any updates to get them to Katie before our next meeting, please. Um, the MECC merger update, this is a fun one. Would you like to give an update on that?
Yeah, certainly. So MECC, Metacommun Emergency Communications Center, our regional dispatch, we've been exploring a merger with SEMREC, which is the same thing, but with Foxborough, Mansfield, Easton, Norton. Uh, this was based upon getting a state nine-one-one grant to expand the facilities at SEMREC, use the whole operation, we moved over there. And we unexpectedly were denied that grant from state nine-one-one. So earlier this month, the MECC's interim executive director, Director Bill Keegan, and the Chair of SEMREC's board, the Town Administrator from Easton, the Chair of our board, the Town Administrator from Franklin, and then some folks from state nine-one-one, and the executive director of SEMREC, all met to say what what happened. So the state just hasn't dealt with this before, the merger of two regional two regional entities, and what do we do with the equipment and everything that state grants paid for initially? How do we, you know? So it's, we're kind of in uncharted waters, so it's not a no, it's a not right now from the state. So they're looking to initiate a study on how regionals will merge, and hopefully clear up the enabling statute stuff, because the way MECC is set up, we have a special act, the way SEMREC is set up, they have an intermunicipal agreement, it's I might not be exactly right, but we've got two separate governing structures. So that's been one of the points of contention about which governing structure do we adopt, as well as what funding structure do we adopt? Myself and the Rentham TA have been tasked with figuring that out. So the state's doing a study this fall, and they're looking to have guidance in advance of the next round of state nine-one-one funding in fiscal twenty twenty-seven. So we may just kind of shift the whole timeline out a year, so it's not, it's it's not, it's not dead like I initially thought it was when we, when I first talked to to the executive director, interim executive director.
So they're not just stretching it out, like they really want to know?
Yeah, they're, they're trying to, they haven't been there before, and they want to make sure we do it right.
Do they give, like, are we gonna turn into a pilot because there's other waiting regional mergers in the wings, or?
I think, I think grow or die has kind of been the mantra of these regional dispatch centers, because there is such efficiency and scaling. And small communities can't do it on their own, so there hasn't been one yet. I think they're trying to set the groundwork that there are more.
Is that, sometimes that's beneficial? Sometimes it's not.
And then, so I am going to the MECC to meet with the interim executive director and the Rentham TA on Tuesday next week. So we'll get an update then, and I'll tour the facility and all that next week. So lots more to come on that.
Alright, that's gonna be like a all-year discussion.
Certainly. Uh, obviously, one of the, one of the advantages of our, of the MECC's governing structure is that I'm I'm on the board of MECC as our representative, and we vote there, and that's a, the TAs, the board members vote, and that's the binding resolution, and that's the binding outcome for MECC. SEMREC's governing structure, they have to go back to all their select boards, get votes of the select boards, and then come back to the, which is just pretty efficient.
Yeah.
So we like ours a lot better, because we're a board of people who know what it's like to deal with boards, and so we move things pretty quickly. And we we propose that our structures survive.
That makes sense. Feel managed.
Yeah. You would, you would hear from Chief Kersey and Chief Eggman, if it wasn't going well.
Surely, you're not talking about our board.
Um, okay, so we we did sixteen already. Seventeen is the Blackstone Valley Opioid Task Force. We talked about this IMA, this is a yearly approval, correct?
Correct, and Chief Kersey's on, just want to give any work on this.
Yeah, Chief, do you want to just say anything about how the region uses this opioid money to to do work across departments?
Sure, we're looking at clinicians and such. This is actually fairly new. That's why we need you to sign up for it. It's several departments that Chief Mont and me started to put together from Oxbridge, got all the chiefs together. And we made this task force in order to have all of our money that comes in. Um, and we made this task force in order to have all of our money that comes in, um, from the opioid settlements, um, be matched by a state grant. So we can double the amount of money for all the communities and then put it towards, um, a program that we're gonna start up in the future. So once all the agreements are signed with all the towns, I think Oxbridge signed theirs yesterday, a few of the other towns are in line right now. Then we're gonna get together and, um, pretty much start the task force and figure out how the funds are gonna be used.
Right, and Jeremy, you feel comfortable signing on perhaps the board and all that good stuff?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, this, uh, similar to MECC, it's not exactly the same as MECC, but where, uh, our dollars go a lot further when we leverage them together and attack problems like this regionally, rather than trying to stop opioid use and stopping those efforts at our borders. I think that's not how the problem exists.
Um, yeah, I would, I would like to hear updates on this. You know, this epidemic is one that I don't think stops at any town. So, um, yeah, if we could hear how that's being applied across the region, I don't know if it's, you know, Narcan boxes, it's convenience stores or whatever it is, I'd like to hear.
Once it's up, once everything's up and running and we start having regular meetings, I'll make sure I forward that to, um, Jeremy and the board.
Great.
And I just to be clear, the town of Oxbridge is kind of the municipality on this, so they do their record keeping and all of that. Um, so we will get periodic reports from Oxbridge on the kind of back end.
Right, because this, there's money coming from a settlement which comes through the state, right? So everything needs to be.
And this IMA obligates us to contribute that this effort.
Right, that makes sense. Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I believe that the select board approved the IMA and authorized, uh, the town administrator to settle.
Second.
All right, discussion. Uh, all those in favor, Kuter, I?
Brugge goes, I.
All right, thank you, chief, for your extended efforts with, uh, this type of regionalization. All right, so, um, all right, number eighteen, TA review process discussion. Do 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 do, we need sound for that. All right, so when we hired Jeremy, um, a year ago, part, like. All right, when we started, when we hired Jeremy a year ago, um, part of his contract said that after one year, we would do, um, a review and so a performance review. And so I talked with, um, HR, who is online, sorry, Jen, you had to wait the whole time, um, uh, about, uh, how we would do that. And, uh, she, uh, uh, got a template for us and, um, I just during the middle of this meeting sent that template to all of you. And, uh, we just adjusted it just a little bit. This is the first time we're doing this. And so, um, what I'd be asking you to do, including the TA, would be to fill out this review. So clearly his will be a self review. Those reviews will all go to, um, Jen. And she's going to go through the efforts of combining those reviews into a single select board review document. And then we will have Jeremy's self review document, you know, to compare that select board document with. Um, going forward, uh, oh, and so in this, uh, review document, um, it talks about, you know, it's just like every other performance review where it talks about goals. We did not put goals specifically in Jeremy's contract when he started. We did have goals, but we didn't write anything down. So this is like the first time through. And so I'm just gonna ask all of you, including Jeremy, to just pick five goals. A little easier for us because we're gonna combine them all and they're gonna kind of look very, you know, similar, but your.
I can share the the ones we did in January, if you want to use that as.
We can do that. I was worried that we had too many on there and that, you know, some members might want to pick their specific goals. That was my only thing. And if we, and I would like to make it more official next time around. So that you have like essentially career objectives that then you can write against next year that you're not kind of scrambling for that. That was the one little piece of this I wanted to have that discussion about is like, how, how, all the rest of it is like, you know, normal employee stuff that we have to capture those metrics of. But when we talk about your, your actual, you know, TA personal goals, that wasn't something that we, you know, we did very generically in your contract, so.
So yeah, the select board set five goals in January to be achieved by the end of the fiscal year. Uh, and they had like sub points to them. It's on the chart.
It's on the flip chart.
Yeah, there's, you know, maybe half were checked off at this point. So my anticipation was that I would be measured against those goals.
Yep.
Because what I really don't want is you to write down a goal that you had for me to do that I didn't know about, and then I get measured against that goal.
And and so I think that's the perfect piece of the HR, combining, I would expect that Jen wouldn't include said goal if it were completely unreasonable and only from a single individual. But.
Only issue I have with that, so you didn't have goals before that point. But that is not your entire career or your whole year. Um, so that's judging the performance of the last couple of months. The story's a little bit, so like to, yeah, include those goals, but also, you know, more general job.
That was my sense is that it wouldn't, like, yes, we would love for you to say that you checked off all those. But we also didn't make that up, you know, while you were being hired. That was something that, you know, after we had discussions with you, after you worked with departments after, after Apple, so.
Yeah, exactly. Not like, yeah.
I do think we can do it next year. I think that we can probably, um, out of the review process. Oh, and so by the way, uh, so then legally, we have to then present that summary in a public meeting and discuss it with you. And so that would happen. So I I'm giving you guys a month, um, to to work this out and send that document to Jen. And then so we'll present this at the last meeting in August. Um, and, uh, that way Jeremy knows where he's going, um, and, uh, for the next year and how he's done. And and maybe we could move this up a little bit, uh, next year, um, and and kind of maybe correspond with a goal setting session. So that you can have those physical actual goals, which Jeremy will probably mention in his county ministry notes. Um, so, uh, Elena, did you have any comments on the process or, um, or anything else you'd like to see added?
Um, I mean, I do think it would be nice to have that, uh, write up uh, at our fingertips of the goals that we talked about in January. And I think also some of the things that we talked about in September. I think just it would be useful to contextualize.
Jeremy and I will do that. We will go down to the flip chart and get that and send it out to you guys.
And and September was that meeting with the Collins Center. I know that we talked about some goals, but right, none of these were formulated at, you know, at the beginning.
He has like that Collins Center report is in our email, um, that they sent, but that's it. I looked and it's, yeah.
It was very sparse, went like, sorry, what I remember seeing from that.
Yeah, it was, it felt like a summary of our points.
Right, and I think it it would probably also be helpful for us to review Jeremy's contract. Because it's been a while since I've read through it.
I will send that along too.
Yeah, I mean, I I know, I I'm, I know that I have it, uh, but it's just something that I'm realizing would be useful.
I'll wrap it all up in a nice little bundle for you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Oh, proud. Just writing some notes to myself. All right, so, um, I'll get that to you guys by Monday. All right, um, so Jen, did you have anything to add? Do you wanna?
Uh, no, nothing to add. Like, like Jason said, we had met and instead of recreating the wheel. I, sorry, I'm babysitting and the dogs are barking. Um, instead of recreating the wheel, I went to MMHR and, um, grabbed a couple of templates and sort of merged them together to make one for Jeremy.
It's great.
And I'd like to say, uh, from the corporate side, it's pretty close to what we do on court, um, at least at my company. So, um, yeah, it felt very familiar.
And so I had also sent, uh, an email to, um, to all department heads, um, we're having an all staff soon, um, that says, you know, do some goal setting with your own staff. Because I want to get performance reviews to be an annual part of kind of all staff stuff, maybe not as, not, definitely not as in depth as this. But by the same token, as I talked about, you know, secret goals, I I want to make sure that expectations from supervisors are laid out first. And then at the end of fiscal year, you do a review, and then in that meeting, you set next year's, and then then it becomes yearly meeting. But we haven't quite done that. So, uh, we'd be looking to, um, to get supervisors on that yearly performance review cadence for all staff.
And just on that note of expectations, um, you are not required, but you are welcome and encouraged to schedule time with Jeremy to just talk about his, uh, you know, what your statements are gonna be on your, uh, paper. Like, it doesn't have to be a secret and it's fine if it is. It doesn't, you know, either way is is been so on that document, it says, you know, you're welcome to schedule time to talk about this. Some people are better talking about it one to one. Um, if you want to do that before you write it, that that's, that's, that would be a suggestion. Uh, but not a requirement. Okay, so, uh, in a month then, um, in a month and a half or so, we'll come back and and talk about what we thought about Jeremy. You bet it's simple. I think Jeremy knows we love him. All right, so. Just real quick check in and make sure I didn't skip over anything. Um, nope. All right, so town administrator report, um. Number nineteen.
All right, um, so I kind of sent out to, um, to all of you, I would spend more time out of the office than typical the last two weeks, um, for a couple of reasons. But, um, so website, we, um, we pushed out our rollout date, um, to the week of the twenty first, so next week, um, there was a lot of, so we had a cutoff date on when stuff was migrated from our old to new, um, and then, um, whatever was uploaded to the website between then and now, uh, we have to go and duplicate and redo. Um, that wasn't quite clear to us, um, until, um, kind of recently. So there's a lot of, a lot of document upload that, um, I felt it was kind of unfair to ask the town clerk to do all of it, um, on top of her radio job. Um, so Civic Plus is doing some of that to us now and that pushed it out like a week. Um, so we have a whole press release and everything to go and we'll, um, again, it'll be the same domain, um, domain name, and it'll just click over immediately. Right now, we, I have all department heads going through. I sent them that what the webs, the new website is right now on the test side. Um, so going through their department descriptions and this is an opportunity to say either it got ported over incorrectly or in the case of the Veterans Services page, it, you know, gives a history of, I feel like half the wars the United States have been in, and that's not really what folks are navigating there for. So the chance to kind of rewrite it as well, um, so.
What, um, when it switches over, what happens to the old website in our column somewhere if we need to go back?
Yeah, so we have three months or something, yeah, um, six months, three months, something like that.
Maybe, do they?
Um, to be able to go back and say, oops, we missed this sort of thing. Um, and I said in my email, it's all staff, and I want to say in the meeting too, um, I've been, you know, been on all of the these sessions and and driving a lot of stuff, but really the Yonkers work on this has been, um, through Ellen Agro, Katie Moxon, and Dan Byer. They've done a ton of work to get this, so thank you to those three.
Thank you.
Um, come class, um, we study.
Before you move on.
Yeah.
So one thing that's missing at, that I couldn't find on the new website is how to ask Highway to do to fix something for you. That I saw like on every other website. I know, I don't know if John's ready to take internet work orders yet, like, so that's fine. But if we are ready to do that, there should be a place. It's like we bought that software, so let's get it working. The the biggest thing we could, because I know that a lot of the ways that they get information is like by people emailing and contacting Darlene or like comes from the, uh, police department, like it just comes from all random different spots. If we can get people going into the website to make those requests, it would take some operational load off.
Yeah, totally agree.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, come class, um, said we've had some reviews, um, some feedbacks, edits. And, um, I talked about last time about the assistant town administrator not having data. I, um, Goddard and I had a conversation on that. So, um, based upon my timeout and our consultant's vacation, uh, we're meeting on the twenty third to close it out. So next week we'll close it out and, uh, we'll just polish it up from there and we'll have it shortly after that.
And that will be like a presentation or like a document that we read and then talk about?
So I will initially, it will be a public document, um, so we, but initially I'll schedule an executive session to go over it with select board in terms of our negotiation strategy with the unions. Um, so at that point, it, I want to be very clear, it will be a public document and everyone will see it. Uh, but the first time the board will see it will be in the context of of labor negotiations. Um, so we'll schedule an executive session once we have it and are able to, um, able to, you know, do something with it. Because you can do everything, it'll have the data there, but then it becomes a discussion where do we want to fall within bands and.
It's kind of get very subjective.
Yeah. Um, a couple of the unions are already chopping it a bit to sit down at the table and kind of tell them, hold off a little bit.
Okay.
Um, on goal setting, um, the goal setting meetings, um, so, um, in July, um, the date that worked, so I I don't think I've heard from everybody, but from who I have, the twenty eighth worked for, for the folks I did hear from, I don't think I've heard from Mike Morale. It's the twenty eighth of Monday. And then if we go into August, um, I know some folks were still firming up their schedule a little bit, so we don't have any, um, firm dates in August. But does, I know the twenty eighth worked for Elena and for Jason, Mike Goddard, twenty eighth. All right, I will confirm with Mike Morale because he's not here, and I think it's important that everybody is at the goal setting meeting.
Yep.
Um, so Monday, the twenty eighth.
I plan to be back in Massachusetts.
Good. Um, IT, um, so I had a meeting with, um, with our IT vendor, Worldban, um, about what we pay for, um, about licenses, how we're consolidating the, uh, the license periods, get everybody on the same, um, same cycle. So we have, you know, alliance with our fiscal year, so we're not paying for duplicated services. What are we paying for boards and committee members? Do we have superfluous stuff for them as opposed to, as opposed to staff? Um, and also doing an inventory of our hardware so we can come up with a, and so capital planning can also weigh in on what, um, the tech refresh budget and cycle should be. So I thought that was a really productive meeting. Katie and I both sat in on that and had that meeting, sat in, awesome, Worldban. Outside Worldban breach because of the relationship, um, of the Worldban's owner being a former public official. I got confirmation from, um, ethics, um, from their lawyer of the day that there's nothing, um, that conflicts with any ethical provision or forever ban on, um, former select person having a or selecting member at that point, um, having a contract with the town, confirm there is not, uh, but, uh, that person can no longer be the who puts together a proposal when we re procure these services, because the contract's up to the end of this year. So he has to have somebody else put together the proposal. He cannot be the one who, um, authors and supplies the proposal. They have joined a, I'm not sure under, um, which guys this was procured initially, uh, but they have, uh, current vendor has gone on to a state contract, which will make procurement a little bit quicker, um, on reprocurement, but I don't think it's a state contract that explicitly covers what they are providing to the town. So they are trying to get on this other state contract. In any event, um, we still need to, um, solicit, um, and get three proposals. So if it's for this type of work, it's a contract under two hundred fifty thousand dollars and we use, um, a state contract, we have to, uh, have a written scope and get, uh, proposals from at least three vendors to be able to issue a contract. Uh, so I've met with a couple of other vendors, um, about anticipated reprocurement, and I would want to do this fall, uh, winter time. So we have a proposal off of which to build the fiscal twenty twenty seven budget. So whether it's the same vendor or a new one, uh, there will be a new number for fiscal twenty seven because this contract only runs through fiscal twenty six. Uh, so that's. Right now, what we have.
Well, you're gonna start with what we have. Are you gonna expand?
So I had asked other vendors for other scopes from other communities. So I had asked other vendors for other scopes from other communities of our size and say, what don't I know? What, what, what are these things is no one else asking for? There'll be ours purposely, and what other things should we be asking for that other folks find useful? And we kind of told them. So it's gonna be a big lift. I'll circulate it here um to the board as well, just because it's it's so central to what we, to what we do.
Yeah, it's nowadays no different than electricity or water, so.
Um, and a lot of what they do is manage our licenses um and then do twenty four seven health care support. That's the, that's the two main functions. They're not our internet service provider, they're not our phone provider or anything like that. They're.
They are in some senses like our device provider though, right?
So we procure a lot of hardware through them, um, which.
Like, are you separating that part out?
So I'm also concerned a little bit about that because we're at a ten thousand dollar threshold on a particular device and we're not competitively procuring that, we're procuring it under a ser, we're procuring goods under a service contract. Um, so um I think best practice is often to split those things apart. And there are separate state contracts under which you can procure those things. Um, so thinking about how to.
Manage is so that that bring the management back onto the town.
So I think I would have the the vendor manage the the inventory and the cycling and the upkeep. But we don't necessarily have to purchase it through that vendor because I'm not sure what markup is being, you know, being um addressed there. Uh, really, I want them to function as our IT director, right? We're outsourcing our IT director. And if we had one in house, they would go out procure stuff, but not necessarily through the same person all the time.
Okay.
Uh, well, yeah, there's certainly at least as many questions as I have answers. Um, I met with um DOT twice this week. Once about a small bridge replacement program, the um for Propeller Street Culver. We had been meet, you know, we appropriated the town appropriated three hundred thousand dollars from pre cash to um to fund and design contract. Um, we then applied for a phase one small bridge repair program grant to fund design work and said in our application, we've already said what we did. Um, and then the state said this is an unusual order of things, usually people coming to come to us looking for money before they have, before they have anything going on. So uh we wanted to show the town it's getting to the game, we were serious about this and we're doing it. And that's what our our consultants were on board with that. We talked to DOT ahead of time and then when it went up a couple of levels, because we got approved for the grant. And then they realized what they did and now I've waited on approval. So uh they're trying, so what we'll end up doing is kind of fracturing the contract into task orders and saying the state task board is going to pay for this hundred thousand dollars that has yet to be done. This is not reimbursable, so we spent seventy four thousand out of the three hundred, so they're not going to pay for anything that we've done. But we're gonna pick a hundred thousand dollars in the middle or at the end that they can fund. It just takes, it's a little bit more administrative uh lift than I would have anticipated, but it's largely on the state to comply with their reporting stuff. We're gonna do the same thing anyway.
Okay.
But we likely will get that hundred thousand dollars.
Which was fell off because of operations or?
Um, they were, um, they were competent and they could figure it out. I asked a lot of questions about phase two. So phase two is the construction grant, that is for five hundred thousand dollars and about our order of operations and how we should do it. So I've got notes on that. And I said, I'm, before we do a lick of appropriation or data authorization, we'll have this follow, we'll have a conversation with them ahead of time because a hundred thousand dollars is great to have, five hundred thousand dollars for constructions, kind of like almost need to have for us for this project. So we'll be cognizant of it on the front end in ways that we were, I thought we were, but we apparently weren't for phase one.
There's music playing, right?
Yeah, I hear it too.
Okay. It's been going the whole time, so I'm just wondering.
The other DOT meeting, uh Chief Kersey, Chief Engle and John Dudley were also on it today. Um, there is Menden Street, um, there's a state owned bridge, North Bridge, um, that is being replaced. And there will be detours um for an indefinite amount of time. They didn't even commit to it being done in a year, which uh which road is that? Menden Street, so off, so North Bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, where comes in the north of there. So we had to work on the on the um, on the detail, on the details of the um uh detour. Um, a meeting with with our stakeholders to to go over it. And we, so it's going to be disruptive. And when we have more information on how disruptive it will be, um, we're gonna share that. It starts on the twenty fifth, so it's.
It's most likely gonna be Hartford at East, right, up to sixteen.
It will be a big.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we were informed of this on Friday, Thursday or Friday.
That's nice. Is there anything that we can do to help keep the uh the pressure on to keep?
Yeah, we can be the squeaky wheel, uh, but it's not an army.
Yeah, exactly. It's not another.
Yeah, I mean, when we have lights at Hartford at East, it would be a lot easier to deal with that type of traffic. But I'm sure Chief's ready to.
Yeah, we're meeting.
It's about.
I think I gotta send anything, but I think we're gonna meet tomorrow.
Just kind of communication, are we gonna, are we gonna take care of any communication or?
Um, so we'll put out something on the website when we have, you know, similar to how we do other kind of alerts. Yeah, so I'll use the text my gov system that I've used before um to push stuff out, say, check the website for the detour. Uh, use our Facebook, put it on the um ended bolt support group, I put it on our website. So this is one of those many times where I wish we had a, you know, weekly paper or something where we can do this kind of stuff. And then the last thing on my list, um, also schedule an executive session for the first meeting in August where town council will join is about um the resolution of the life estate at the Trask property. Um, so we received um an appraisal um document, uh praising the life estate and the market value of property, um, which, you know, will be a public document that we can share with the holder of the life estate, uh, but strategizing over, um, you know, procurement of real property. We'll hold an executive session, have council, um, brief us on our options.
It's good.
The August second meeting.
August sixth.
The first meeting in August, yeah, sorry.
All right, so uh thank you for those, uh, yes, sir.
What are we doing? Do you have an update on the street schedule?
Um, no, we didn't even get our debrief with the contractor over what's.
It seems like they stopped doing anything there.
Yeah.
So we had a bunch of trees.
That was just the two day thing. Uh, I'll, I'll endeavor to have one for the next.
I haven't even seen Big Save.
No, I don't think it's March.
I mean, there are way ways.
I, I've said this a couple of times, they wanted to start in April and then they want, or they want to start June and they said it was first of April and then in May, they're like, well, we don't quite have a date yet. Uh, so it's been.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm worried about for, you know, John Dudley's plans, that it's, it's also delaying our, our plans, so.
Yeah, and we wanted to get it done before June thirtieth because the um we're on a collective bid with Milford for the excavation, the milling, and then for the paving. And Milford extended the bid that which had the unilateral ability to extend the bid for a year um on one of those two, I can't remember which one, but not the other, and didn't notify us until May or June. Um, so we are having to go out and procure one of those services on a competitive basis on our own. Um, so we're not ready to do it right now anyway, uh, because we don't have a a contract. So really, you want to do these bids in February and March, so you have them ready to go July one, but we were informed pretty late by Milford, is my understanding. So, uh, yeah, we wanted to line it up and get it done before June thirtieth, so we had everybody, but obviously it didn't happen. Uh, but yeah, we're really cognizant of um highly being able to tie in.
I'm confident. I guess at one point, do we just say?
I mean, you gotta do it at least before the plants close, right? Or otherwise, it's supposed to get done for another year, so.
And we were due, not to, we we're we're told of an additional, you know, chapter ninety funding, this two hundred and some thousand dollars to the bond bill allocate solely on road miles. Bond bill is yet to materialize and with, you know, with the state budget passing miraculously nearly on time, uh, the governor vetoed, has the line on veto power and vetoed a lot of fly on spending in the face of federal uncertainty. Um, so we're now, whereas, you know, in when the bill was filed in January, we were pretty confident this was gonna, this was gonna go through. We're less confident in supplemental chapter ninety money right now. And we're operating under the assumption that we won't have.
That's a big chunk of change.
Two hundred and something thousand dollars.
Yeah. Right. Anybody have anything else? All right, so next meeting, so Jeremy had already talked about the goal setting meeting and health check with uh Mr. Morley and see if he can make that first date. And then our next meetings in August would be uh Wednesday, August sixth and Wednesday, August twentieth. Does that make sense?
Um, I want to bring up one thing um on future items that I got an email about and should be on here. Uh, plan for the Menon Senior Center, uh, what our, what our goal is going forward.
Yes.
Uh, so um I have two emails from our consultants, Abacus, that I, you know, I owe them a couple of things um to be able, for them to be able to move forward. And because uh one of the proposals is um uh adjacent to the current library, I owe the library trustees um a conversation before we, you know, move forward with any real um efforts uh on what that looks like. So um it will be, we'll add it to the to the future agenda items on what we, you know, discussing the Abacus report and what um the town wants to, what the board would like to present to town meeting as the future of um.
You think we could do that in the first week of September?
Uh, I want to talk to Abacus first. I mean, they need to finish their report in this calendar year. Um, I'm confident they will. Their holdup right now is.
Yeah, but I mean, there's a lot of months.
They're holding right now. I want to be really clear too, this is like, Abacus isn't holding stuff up, like I need to get their stuff. This is me getting the things. Uh, so uh I don't want to pin a date on it because.
All right, then we will throw that on the um next upcoming events thing so that it pokes you in the eye every week. Um, all right, so yeah, the regular meeting time uh of the first and third Wednesday. Everybody feel okay about that, at least in this room? All right. All right, so then I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Should do adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, could or I?
Who goes I?
All right, meeting adjourned at eight twelve. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you so much. Bye, Elena.
Bye.
See you soon. Have a good trip.
Thanks.